Call this meeting order?
On me and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. Interesting meeting, I believe. And so, item number three on the agenda is any citizen to be heard. We have any citizens to be heard. Not hearing any citizens to be heard. We proceed to item number four. Meeting with the county officers regarding estimate of needs for fiscal year 16 and 17.
You will pass the house down. The top page is just a compilation of the estimates as submitted. It is a copy of the temporary appropriations that is further on the agenda, but I've attached it because all the accounts are on there to go through.
Shall we proceed then? All right, well, first on the menu is the district attorney. And in 15-16, they had budgeted $36,000. Their estimate of needs is still $36,000 with 0% change. So, the half-year, 15 to 16, is temporary appropriations for fiscal year 16-17. Is half that amount, that'd be $18,000 that they are currently operating on. The DA law books is also on there for $6,000. And they have not changed that $6,000. And so, they're appropriated $3,000 until our budget is confirmed. And then, for their civil attorney, $6,513.53. That has not changed. And so, it will continue with $3,256.77. This brings the total for the district attorney to $42,000 budgeted last year. $42,000 is their estimate of needs and $21,000 to continue what they're doing.
You may see Section 2, the law books. Obviously, we only spent, we only spent $22,1505 of the $6,000 last fiscal year. And that varies from year to year. It depends on if it's a year where there are new statute books and pocket parts out, or if there are not, or if there are new supplemental statutes out, or if they're not. It also is our, formerly, we use Westlaw Research, which is a large part of the expense. However, we canceled that contract and we're going with LexisNexis because it's cheaper. And that's going to change because the first year is a certain price and then the second year it goes up. So, I'm guessing, based on what I know we've contracted for, that we won't spend $22,1505 this coming year in legal materials. But we haven't spent $6,000 for quite some time.
So...
It's becoming cheaper to get our legal needs, legal statutes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Because of modernization of information.
Yeah. And LexisNexis gave us a much better view. And I think multiple DA's offices this year canceled Westlaw and LexisNexis because they've undercut Westlaw so much in providing more.
So... I don't have any questions? I don't have any really, any kind of questions. It may be here in the future when we meet with the excise board. You may want to reduce that.
Okay. The Section 1 is really not your money. What happens is you front it, we reimburse it.
Oh, I see. The state does.
Yeah, and if you notice, we've, you know, spent maybe half of, we spent $17,699 as of June the 13th. And of course, we don't rush up and try to deplete that money.
Yes.
I don't, do we ever? It varies. The $36,000, the state just increased that, I think, last year or a year before because it had been 24 and it went to 36. I've received a letter from the state mandating the 36 for this year. But I think as far as how much you all spend is really kind of relative to needs each year.
Yeah. Depends on computers, which we did a better deal through DAC for the computers.
Questions?
No, I just have one comment. I just really do appreciate the professional manner in which our district attorney's office operates. We've reached out to your office several times this last year over civil issues, on how to purchase equipment and doing some other things. And we've received some excellent feedback and guidance, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I'm going to pass it on to Lowell because Lowell is the one that gets us straight on all that because it can be very complex, very confusing.
The only thing that we would, we would seem to ask is that, not often, but occasionally, and Monty and several of us have talked about this. When we need civil review and signature, oftentimes, there's no one available across the street to do that.
All you need to do...
But we do appreciate the professional services that you guys provide.
I would prefer on, like I was just discussing with Troy, major contracts, that Lowell looks at those, not my staff attorneys because they're criminal law experts. And Lowell's not a criminal law expert, he's a civil expert. And he's a very good one. But anytime you email me and say we need something signed, I will probably be here that day. I mean, it's not, it's not difficult for me to get here. Sometimes I would love to leave my office there and come anywhere else. So, it's not hard. Email's a great thing, just use the email, or text me.
Well, we really do appreciate your service and the way things are working right and seems to be.
Well, we're lucky because we have Lowell.
We are.
I mean, I can't emphasize that enough, it's not me, it's Lowell.
Lowell has been there for us many years. And his wisdom in being able to search that civil law is amazing, in my book. So, yes, we're very grateful to have Lowell as well. Thank you so very much.
Well, thank you all.
Thanks.
Bye.
Have a good day.
You too. I'll go to the felony docket now where I'm an expert.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next up, and we are going by first priority. I have an email from Sheriff Nelson with the state auditor. And these first priority constitutional offices. Starts with the court of clerk, the county clerk, the treasurer, and the commissioners.
Yeah, commissioner.
Yeah, treasurer, and then the commissioners, and then valuation property for taxation. So, the sheriff, yeah, sheriff is in that. So, anyhow, sheriff is next, and his full-time salaries is $848,000. $818,000 is his estimate of needs, which is same.
Okay, we have a typo on my form. If you look at what was submitted, it's 848, it's the same.
It's the same, okay.
I will correct that.
So, that compliment him it went down.
Yeah, yeah, well, I compliment him that it did not go up. But anyhow, his estimate of needs is the same as it was last year. And so, that would continue 50% for $424,000. His part-time salaries, $29,000. He is increasing that by 18.3% of $35,500. And so, he will continue with half of last year's at $14,500. His travel, $10,200, remains the same, so he will continue with $5,000. His maintenance and operation, $8,800, no change. So, $4,400 is what he's continuing with. Capital outlay, $5. He's just holding that open in case it does need some transfer of funds in case there's some capital outlay. And then jail operations, $250,000. And no change in that, so that will continue with half of that. And that brings its grand total to last year, $1,146,500. And then...
That total's going to be off because my number is off.
That total is off, but it's not a decrease, but it's an increase.
You mean $1,152,505.
So, that's an increase of $6,000, which is going to be not much of an increase. I don't know the percentage on that. So, you'll be continuing at $572,900 for just the temporary appropriations during this coming fiscal year, or this fiscal year. So, Sheriff?
Mine would be the same as last year, but we increased it so because you guys wanted security over here. So, that $6,000 is part of the increase to take care of the security.
I see. Questions?
I just have one question on that particular point, Jim. Do you have no other funds available to provide that?
Provide what?
The security, yeah. Where the law would allow you to expend those funds to provide the security.
I probably have other fee cash accounts, but this is the way, this is the way we do it.
I'm sure I don't understand what you meant by that.
Well, I'm not going to get into an argument with you.
I don't want to argue either, I'm just asking.
I understand, I've submitted a budget the way I did last year and it's only increased $6,000, which you guys asked for.
Right.
Otherwise, it would be the exact same as last year, out of the same budget, out of the same money.
So, the question that I was given was, would it be all right if the sheriff put on his estimate of needs a request for additional funds to provide courthouse security? My answer was absolutely, you can put anything on there if you want. We can discuss it. And that's kind of what I'm trying to do now. If we have cash accounts that have the cash in it to sustain the courthouse security requirement, I'm just kind of curious why we would ask for more money out of the general fund.
Well, we've debated this, we've debated this in the past as far as needing supplying security here. And the DA's and everybody said, I do not have to supply security here.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have seen a DA show up and say that, but I think that, I think that state laws pretty much outline that you're responsible.
You have, you should have the paperwork, the emails from Lowell Bartow because we had talked about this in the past.
So, you do have the cash available, but you're asking for an increase that you want to come to support this.
I would have to talk to Troy and then to see what money would be able to come out, what account and for that. But I'm asking for this because you guys requested it.
No, we didn't really request it. We said it would be okay for you to put it on there and we talked about it.
I disagree. I was specifically asked by this board in a meeting to ask the sheriff or recommend to him that that be added to this estimate of needs. And I did as this board asked me to do.
Ma'am, I believe I was the one that asked you to carry the message. And the message I asked you to carry was to let the sheriff know that he's more than welcome to put that on his estimate of needs.
So, that's what he did. And according to the statutes, he has a perfect right to do that. In fact, it's amazing that he hasn't increased his estimate of needs over the last seven years that we've done all of this. So, I think that we have pretty well discussed that.
Well, I would just like to close my statement with, I don't believe that it's right to continue to increase what's been given out of the general fund when we have cash funds available to supply or to support those requirements. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be building cash funds. That's not what we're here for, is to be putting savings accounts together.
Well, that's fine. Just constitutionally, he has the right and priority in funding in the budget. So, there we are. All right, moving, thank you, Sheriff. Doing an excellent job of keeping your funding very tight. And I, for one, appreciate that you do that way. I'd like to recognize Martin Sharpton.
Well, just for your advisement, Mike, the Board of County Commissioners does not have the authority to regulate other people's cash funds. They don't have the right to rate them, they don't have the right to move the money around. Only that particular officer or office has that authority. But if, and the law clearly states, and the Supreme Court opinions also state their ruling, that if the funds are available, this board, or the excise board actually is the one that has the power to do a budget, shall approve it. It's not going through there and pick and choose if it's a constitutional duty.
And so, even though we may disagree, he has the absolute right to do what it is that he is doing. I got it. All right, thank you, Sheriff. Moving on to...
Jim, we got the jail thing to talk about. Sorry.
Jail operations?
Oh, jail operations, I'm sorry. You're...
It's next.
Oh, it's next.
It's on there, under the sheriff's.
Jim asked, he was finished, and I said, I think we still got jail operations to talk about.
Oh, okay, all right. So, jail operations, he has $250,000, that has not changed. He's got $125,000 that he's allowed to operate with. So, what else are we needing here?
Well, again, I just want to bring up, we discussed this last year. With the advent of the quarter cent sales tax for the jail operation, this $250,000 for maintenance and operation of the jails has been a legacy request from the sheriff's office that's been here year over year. Last year, I asked that we look at the quarter cent sales tax on the operation of the jail to see if it in fact was meeting that obligation, if it was falling short, or if it was over. Again, I would like to have that discussion sometime between now and the time we've approved these things. Again, along the lines we talked about yesterday about, you know, the jail operations, we have the commissary and all of those other contracts and things that are going on. What the actual cost to operate the jail is? Is the quarter cent sales tax that was voted on by the people sufficient to support the jail? If it's not, we need to understand what increment it is needed. I'm not sure that the increment is exactly $250,000, is what I'm talking about. And we need to keep supplementing, and I have no problem with that. I just, I would just like to know how much it is exactly we need to supplement.
And I have no problem sitting down with you and looking at that and discussing it with Troy and everybody. I have no problem sitting down, looking at something like that.
I think it's important that, I mean, just on a general note, I think it's important that once a year, we as county officials give a, an accounting, a public accounting of all of our finances and our financial status to the public, at least once a year. It's not, not picking on you, Jim, it's just...
Mine's available every day.
Yours is one of the bigger budgets in the county, so it's going to draw a lot of attention.
There's people going in and asking Troy about mine.
Right, I understand.
On a daily.
That's all I have to say.
So, is this something that you would be asking the excise board to do? Is that what you're saying, is to look into this? Because they are the ones that set the budget.
I don't agree with that.
Well, I can...
I think that's what you believe.
This is already gone to the Supreme Court, this is already...
What is this, and what Supreme Court ruling are you...
Actually, it's the Court of Civil Appeals.
Right.
That overturned a decision in Sequoia County regarding the establishment of whose job is whose. Now, the thing with all the research you say that you do, you would be familiar with this court case.
Aren't we a little catty today?
Yes, we are. This court case was brought by the Board of County Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave you out, against the excise board because the Board of County Commissioners took it upon themselves to cut general fund constitutional offices' requests to fund non-constitutional offices. And he went to court...
I'm not sure that's what we're talking about.
Oh, I'm going to get to that point.
I would like to ask if you'd like to put this on the agenda today.
I don't have to, it's an officers' meeting.
I don't think she has.
We're not even...
Oh, but we are meeting with.
We are meeting with them.
So, but the bottom line is, the Court of Civil Appeals in our attorney and laying out the duties of this board and the excise board, if you would like to look specifically at their item number 11, we reiterate, however, it is the county excise board, not the Board of County Commissioners, that is statutorily charged with the duty of requiring adequate provision for performance of mandatory constitutional governmental functions within the means available. And although the commissioners may be permitted to collaborate in the budget reduction process, the final order shall be that of the county excise board. We therefore hold with the limitations set forth and the statutes quoted. And in absence of arbitrary or capricious behavior, county excise boards have the final approval of an ultimate authority over county budgets.
I agree with that statement.
No, apparently don't.
That's not what I'm saying. You said you disagree.
No, I did not say, I agree with that statement. The county excise boards are the ones that are responsible to determine whether or not the budget meets the constitutional requirements of the office. That's, that's, so the...
At the option of the excise board, the governing board may collaborate in such reductions.
So, you're asking that the excise board be looking into that? And I agree with the excise board, but I thought you just disagreed.
Of course, I don't know how they're expected to collaborate without meeting together, but we did away with that part of it as well.
Yeah, we have to collaborate, but there you are. We changed it, so here we all are.
And so, what I hear, what I hear you saying, Ms. Clerk, is that we should continue to just, go ahead and give all the general fund money to everybody that...
I'm saying that the law requires...
If it's available, if we have a...
If it's available, it is not this board's decision, it is the excise board's under the law.
I disagree with that.
Well, you may, but the law says different. The Court of Civil Appeals has made the law.
I think you're in, sir.
Excuse me, yes, sir.
My inter, I read it directly.
I'm done.
With all respect, you can come talk to me about that anytime, we'll discuss it.
Thanks, Jim.
But I have to go to a funeral, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sheriff. See you again.
You need to take this up with the excise board, Martin, it sounds likely. Onto the treasurer. Full-time salaries, $98,098.56. You have increased your estimate of needs by 1.21%. The $99,300, your six months interim will be appropriated to be $49,049.28. Sheriff? Gentlemen, questions? I'm just assuming you increased it for salaries?
Yes.
That's all I got.
I live in on my MNO because I've never asked for money out of county general. And I've used for the last nine years my fee cash account, and I depleted it down to nothing. So, I asked for the money to cover my blanket for just...
Oh, yeah, your MNO, uh-huh, went from $2,500, I'm sorry, I didn't read that, $2,500 up to $10,000?
Yeah. I used to take all, use all the money out of my fee cash account, and I've done that for nine years and depleted it because I've never asked for money, hardly any money out of county general.
Okay. So, that's an increase. Overall, your entire budget for last year was $105,403.56. And now, your estimate of needs is $114,105. That is a 7.63% increase.
Yes.
Your contention will be $52,699.28. Any more questions?
Not me.
Yep. Sheriff, you do a great job.
Thank you.
We definitely appreciate your service. Moving on to the commissioners. Our full-time salaries, $187,000, no change. Part-time salaries, just leaving it open at $5. Travel, $14,400. We've reduced that to $8,200, which is a 75.61% decrease. And we will continue with $7200, but obviously, we will not be using that. MNO, $500. And maintenance and operating, we increased that to $15,000. That's a 96.67% increase. And then capital outlay, we just keep in that.
That should be $1,500.
That should be $1,500?
Yes.
I was going to say that's not right.
Yeah.
I was going to say too, that sounded like a huge increase. So, $1,500, which would be a 9.6 probably increase. Would it, no, it'd be three times. Well, regardless, it went from $500 to $1,500. Capital outlay, we keep in that open at $5. So, our grand total on commissioners is $201,910. We have an increase, but I can't tell. That would be $216,000? No. $211, no.
The total request is $196,705.
Is how much?
$196,705.
So, that's a decrease, $197. Questions? Observations?
Where's the highway levy, both of the camps?
It's the very last thing.
Yep. I just got a point when we get there.
Yeah. This is just for measure of salaries, isn't it? In our full-time employee.
I'll wait till we get there.
All right. No further questions, we'll proceed to OSU. Full-time salaries, $23,353. They have increased their estimate of needs to $32,088. That's a 27.22% increase. Travel, they've increased from $9,500 to $10,500, which is a 9.52% increase. Their maintenance and operating money, $12,800. They are increasing to $13,500, which is a 5.19% increase. They're keeping their capital outlay expense item open with $5. So, their grand total is $45,658 last year, and their estimate of needs is $56,093 for an overall increase of 18.60%. So, OSU?
I don't see them here.
Not here.
I can tell you that the increase on the full-time salaries is being what's required from OSU as part of the contract fees. Due to their funding cuts, they are shoveling, shifting some of that over onto the counties as part of the contract.
So, the salaries over there that are partially reimbursed by OSU are partially funded?
Yeah, we actually have to contract with them for the extension service and the breakdown of what's required by us to receive that service. And so, some of the salaries come to us and they pick up the other part. And what they picked it up is being shuffled more so to the counties for the extension service due to their...
So, OSU is paying less on salaries this year than last year, and that's why this increases here?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions? Not at this hearing ending, we go to the county clerk. And the county clerk, full-time salaries, $279,430. An increase of 2.1%. 1.6% is her, is her estimate of needs to $285,600. Part-time salaries, she's left at zero. Travel, $5,400 with no change. Maintenance and operating, $15,000 with no change. Capital outlay, keeping that open with $5, no change. Grand total, $299,835. An increase of 2.02% to $306,500.
I asked for salary increases for my five existing staff members. Last year, I had requested and received the funding to add an additional staff member. I was not able to do so because that was contingent on...
Uh, I was not able to do so because that was contingent on some officer renovations that I've yet to be able to find anyone that will do, so I have space for the desk for that new person. I have rolled that money back, turned it back, but I do need it back because that is a petition that still needs filled. So, um, the increase is simply for small raises for the existing staff and then reappraisal of the funding for the additional person.
Sounds good to me. May if you don't try to get another, but you don't have any room for it.
I'm trying to make room for the one I need to add.
I know.
M and O is sufficient for you?
Yes, sir. And I would like to point out, just, just as a point so you all realize, um, I do have cash accounts. I support my office on my cash accounts. This fifteen thousand, um, the fire department's paid fifteen thousand six hundred in administrative costs back into general. And so, basically, that fifteen thousand that the fire department's put in for administering their sales tax is what's coming to us, who is actually the ones administering their sales tax. And all I use it for is postage and monthly bills. All equipment, supplies of any kind, all come out of my cash accounts.
Thank you.
Moving on. Park clerk. Full-time salaries, hundred sixty-two thousand nine fifty-nine, no change. Part-time salaries, zero. Travel, fifty-four hundred dollars, no change. Grand total, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, no change in the estimate of needs. So, I sure-- Questions?
No increases? No final given salaries? Any increases?
Can't get it from the state, so, the ones that are on the state side, if I can't get one to everybody else.
How many state employees do you have?
Three.
Three? How many's county?
There's me, Patty, and two other employees.
Four.
Tell them.
Good night. About three employees.
Thank you.
Thanks, you. No questions. Proceeding on to the county assessor. Full-time salaries, one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine sixteen. We have a four point six-seven percent increase. One hundred and seventy-five thousand ninety-eight dollars on estimate of needs. Part-time salaries, thousand dollars, no change. Travel, six thousand dollars, no change. Maintenance and operating, thirty-eight thousand, no change. Capital outlay is, was five dollars, keeping that open. This year, asking for fifteen hundred dollars, which is almost a hundred percent increase. So, um, there you are.
Here I is. We're, we're needing, uh, and the capital outlay in my office, we're needing some filing cabinets and another desk. And, uh, we can make do, but we're, everything is just crammed in there. So, I was asking for that for the office and, um, then raises for my people. And I would like to talk about the people and the salaries in my office and what happens. There's a statute, it's Title 68 of the Oklahoma State Constitution, that says that the, uh, within one year from completion date of initial accreditation, the assessor shall be required to successfully complete advanced accreditation. The same holds true for my employees. I have, in the past, hired people from the newspaper or off the street that can't, were not able to pass these classes. And what happens is, I spend, it's a seven-week course. They're gone seven weeks. So, the basic pay for them for seven weeks is thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars that, that I'm out because they're at school. Then I send them to a hotel for eighteen hundred sixty-nine dollars for seven weeks. And the class costs fourteen hundred per seven weeks, and the meal's seven hundred. If you total that, that's seventy-eight hundred and nineteen dollars per employee if I have to hire and they can't pass the first or second test even. I mount all that money plus the time. So, I feel it's extremely important to have, uh, um, intelligent, higher-class people in my office to do this work. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of work to get through here. And so, many times, I've been out that money. Um, now, I have a group in here that are worthy to be paid, and I want to keep them. And in order to keep them, I'm going to have to pay them a little bit better than what they're getting because they can go elsewhere. Several of them are college graduates in there, but they're doing fine appraisal work now. The appraisal work is extremely important in Logan County, in any county. That's where this budget begins. And the training and the, um, uh, losing an employee, I had lost an employee this year with Mary Bimmer. So, we were, and she was the key mapper, essential employee. We had to start all over again. And so, um, I need to, to pay them a little better, and I need some things in the office. So, what I'm asking for that increase. I brought the statutes in that requires that they pass and, 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 uh, or they're terminated. I have to terminate them, it says, and which is what I've done. Also, I gave back thirteen thousand this year, you know? I didn't use everything, and I turned it back on this account.
What was that, salary?
Well, part of it was salary because I had budgeted for increase last year, but I waited until this was approved before they got it, so they didn't get their increase that I had budgeted in. So, I gave it back.
I don't have any questions, ma'am.
Okay.
Thanks, Tish. See how the excise board handles it. Uh, next is reevaluation. Revaluation, I'm sorry. Uh, full-time salaries, two seventeen-two. There's an increase, again, of seven point six-two percent to two hundred and thirty-five thousand one twenty. Part-time salaries, twenty-five hundred, no change. Travel, sixteen thousand, decreased to eleven thousand, which is a forty-five point four-five percent decrease. Maintenance and operating, sixty-four five, has been increased to sixty-five thousand, less than one percent increase. Capital outlay, five thousand, has been decreased to twenty-five hundred, which is a hundred percent decrease. And then the TASC contract, uh, for thirty-seven thousand five hundred, has been increased six point two five percent to forty thousand, making a grand total budgeted last year of three hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Estimate of needs now three hundred and fifty-six thousand one twenty, an overall increase of three point seven seven percent.
I, I have a little bit different numbers than you, but it's probably just an error on my part because I had a total of three hundred and forty-six thousand five twenty for last year. I guess I picked a number up wrong. But, uh, the increase on this one, again, is just for salaries. And I gave back thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-three this year.
Tish, I can tell you the difference.
Okay.
Uh, when you totaled up, you included the transferred money into salaries--
Okay.
--which was, was actually not budgeted.
Okay.
So, when I took this, I took what was actually budgeted. So, they, that transfer for the safety award and that, that skewed the numbers a little bit. I just went back to what was actually budgeted.
Questions?
Thank you, Tish.
Thanks, Tish. Moving on to the excise board. Salaries, three thousand three fifty, a sixteen point two-five percent increase of four thousand. Uh, the travel, nine hundred, has been decreased to five hundred. That's an eighty percent decrease. The budget account, eleven hundred dollars, has been decreased to six hundred dollars, eighty-three point three-three percent decrease. So, that gives us a grand total last year of five thousand three fifty. The estimate of needs is five thousand one hundred, so that is a decrease overall of four point nine zero percent.
That's requisitioning for the excise. I can speak for them.
Yes.
They, they never use all of their service money, uh, for personal services. The reason that I asked for the increase is they are paid for attendance at each meeting, excise board and equalization board. It's fifty dollars per meeting. The equalization board has resulted because of some shift in statutes in more meetings. And we can't project or presume how many actual meetings will be held in a year, but, but it has been a growing number. Um, they're actually turning back five hundred dollars of the thirty-three fifty, but that, that was built in there because of that. No one is taking, has turned in a travel claim, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't have to do some, so that was reduced. And the budget account, the law provides that they have to actually buy these forms, the originals that we send out, as well as budget forms. Um, over the years, because the forms have gone electronic for the actual budgets, only have two cities or two towns that we have to buy the paper budgets for, as well as, as these officer report forms. So, the cost on those has reduced, uh, the need for that expense.
Questions? All right. Moving on, the election board. Full-time salaries, seventy-seven thousand eight sixty. There's an increase of one point five two percent, seventy-nine thousand sixty. On part-time salaries, fifteen thousand last year. This estimate of needs, sixteen five, for a nine point oh nine percent increase. Travel, twelve hundred dollars, has been reduced to eight hundred dollars, a fifty percent decrease. Maintenance and operating, twenty-seven thousand five hundred, a decrease to twenty-five thousand three hundred, which is an eight point seven percent decrease. Capital outlay, uh, remaining open with five dollars. Grand total, one hundred and twenty-one thousand five sixty-five last year. Estimate of needs, one twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars for a eight one-hundredth percent increase. So, Ms. Dorie?
Um, well, I, the increase in salary is just for my assistant. Um, my salary is reimbursed, most of it. You know, you guys contribute part to my salary. Um, and then my part-time help has gone up because I do have a permanent part-time person, and we'd like her to work just a few more hours. There's a few more elections coming up, and she's gonna have to work a little bit more. Um, and I like to have that permanent part-time person because it takes about two years to really know what's going on in our office and to be able to answer questions and for us to feel comfortable with that, with being able to leave for lunch and have questions answered. So, um, she's not someone that wants to be a full-time person, and we can't, we, I just can't justify another full-time person, so, um, I would just like her to work a few more hours, so. And pay her a little bit more money than what we're paying her. But other than that, I mean, and I do, uh, you know, if you guys have a, I ask for about ten thousand dollars a year if you guys are going to have a county-wide election, which you did in March, but that went on with the state, so you didn't have to pay all of that. So, I will be giving back money at the end of this year, probably about ten thousand dollars. If you have any questions?
I don't-- Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Do a great job.
Thank you.
You do. In fact, it's really gotten a lot more squared away than it used to be. Thank you so much, there, Erin. Moving on to the general government. Full-time salaries, twenty-eight thousand two hundred, and we have asked for an increase of thirty-one thousand nine hundred, eleven point six oh percent. Part-time salaries, twenty-five hundred. We've reduced that to five dollars to keep it open. Maintenance and operating, four hundred and forty-eight thousand nine ninety-nine last year. We've increased that to four hundred and seventy-five thousand, a five point four-seven percent increase. Capital outlay, two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. That is decreased one point six-two percent to two hundred and thirty thousand. Our building maintenance, eighty-seven thousand, remains the same. So, our grand total last year was eight hundred thousand four thirty-one, budgeted. Our estimate of needs is eight hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars. That is a two point eight five percent increase. So--
Why the increase, Marvin?
Sir?
This is our--
Yeah. So, so I get to take the shot on that? I'll love it.
Oh, he'll--
Yep.
I mean, we increased it for the general or for the janitor and, and then this is the first place we're gonna cut the budget anywhere, so.
One of the things we discussed is, uh, that it's more cost-effective to go ahead and pay the overtime required for the single person than to hire an additional person, even a part-time person, because you have the friends you have to pick up and that sort of stuff. So, it gets more expensive to do that, which is why that, that increase in salary was a fundamental part of--
Exactly.
Thanks.
I would point to the board, um, on the, what's going to be approved for temporary appropriation. The general government M and O account is being approved or asked to be being approved for temporary. I increased that to three fifty. That's based on the meeting yesterday and the decision to pay the property and liability insurance in full.
Yes.
Uh, so fifty percent would have cleaned out at, at a temp. So, I increased it to that to allow.
So, we can have some money to operate on?
Correct. Right. Okay. Moving on to insurances. Our FICA is one sixty-two, one sixty-two, ten last year. We've increased that to one sixty-five for a one point seven-two increase. Retirement, three six, three hundred and sixty thousand, increased to three hundred and seventy thousand, two point seven oh increase. The unemployment, thirty-five thousand, we've increased to thirty-seven thousand, which is five point four one. Our workers' comp, one hundred and seventy-two thousand six sixteen, increased to one eighty-nine nine seventy-nine. That's a nine point one four percent increase. Our employee health insurance, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We are increasing to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is a two point one nine percent. Uh, that is gonna have to be adjusted as we get our premiums in, is the one we have to pay, I'm sure. So, our grand total last year was one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents. We're asking for an increase to one million five hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is a three point two percent increase.
Guess we didn't need that ten cents.
No further observations on that charity? Then, we're, last year was twelve hundred dollars. Uh, we are asking for an increase to one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is a thirty-one percent increase. And that's simply because we're getting more of them. Our request. On the civil defense. Full-time salaries, thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixteen cents, uh, no change. Oh, yes, sir. Does that change? Oh, yeah. Thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars and sixteen cents, a one percent increase. Travel remains the same, one thousand. Maintenance and operating went up from sixty-five hundred to seven thousand. That's a seven point one four percent increase. Capital outlay remains open with five dollars. And sire maintenance, uh, we've increased that from four thousand last year to ten thousand this year with a sixty percent increase. And then overall, that is fifty thousand seven hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents this past fiscal year. That increase is eleven point nine eight percent, almost twelve, to fifty-seven thousand six hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents. David Ball, you're up to play.
So, the small increase in, um, my salary, more than anything, and then the increases on there in the sire maintenance, it's, the sirens, takes a lot to keep them going. in the sirens maintenance, it's, the sirens, takes a lot to keep them going. Obviously, if the budget doesn't come in and we need to cut that down, we definitely could cut that down. I just can't foresee if there's gonna be issues. Hopefully, there's no issues and I can give it all of it back, but historically, we've batteries and lightning strikes and different things with our sirens.
David, one of the things I'd like for us to look at next year is the possibility of applying for some more of these grants for that type of stuff, for the maintenance and operation of the sirens, there's some available up through ACOG and those kind of places that we can look at and be happy to work with going, but anything we can do to help keep from adding to the operations and maintenance expense of the sirens systems out here, I think all of us would appreciate. But, thank you.
Thank you. There ain't no further discussion. The audit account is, last year was sixty-four thousand one eighty-eight seventy-two, that has estimate needs increase of thirty-five point two nine percent, and ninety-nine thousand one eighty-eight seventy-two.
Would you like me to reiterate this?
Yes, please.
All right, this is a statutory account, we don't really have any say-so in it. One tenth of one mil by statute has to be appropriated for covering the cost of doing our annual audit. If the audit is not done in that year, therefore, the funds are not expensive by, are expended by law, that money has to go and stay in that account the following year, so it rolls until it's actually used by the auditors. So each year that we do not do an audit, we continue to appropriate, and we have to add the one tenth of one mil to it until the auditors do their, come out and do it, and we get bills to pay it. It is a fluctuating amount because it's based on that tenth of a mil, so this will be adjusted when all of that information is in. The thirty-five percent is fairly accurate to what, it'll come in around thirty-five thousand a year, somewhere in there, but it will be completely adjusted once all those millage numbers can be ran. Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Moving on to free fare.
You skipped our budget.
I skipped what?
Your free fare.
I'm sorry.
You're chomping at the bit to get that.
I was.
I just seen.
All right. The free fare. Full-time salaries, eighteen thousand three hundred, no change. Part-time salaries, two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, no change. Travel, one thousand, no change. Maintenance and operating money, thirty thousand, no change. Capital outlay is, was forty thousand. The estimate needs is seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a forty-five point six seven percent increase. That makes our overall for last year was ninety-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Their new estimate needs is one hundred and twenty-five thousand four fifty, that is a twenty-six point eight zero percent increase.
If the board had looked at your annual handout for them, the free fare included some of those estimates for some roof repair?
Yeah, I've seen the reappearance.
And what they did on their numbers is they put twenty-four thousand for capital outlay, and then the request for the roof of forty-nine six twenty-five. They listed them separately, however, it's all a capital outlay, so I totaled them for the capital outlay here, but they did distinguish twenty-four thousand and then the roof.
I certainly support getting the roof fixed over there, I mean, we've gotta maintain the buildings we have, they're gonna fall down.
No question. Yeah?
Thank you, sir.
There ain't no further questions?
Anybody?
Anybody? All right. Highway budget.
I think we need a new fairground somewhere else.
I agree with, well, I'll go on with that, maybe.
We'll have to put that on.
Maybe get that.
New bridge built over the Cimarron, maybe we might want to move it up north, I don't know.
Highway budget. All right, highway budget, three hundred thousand is what we're asking for, or got last year, three hundred thousand is our estimate needs, no change, I still think it ought to be three million, but.
I was just gonna point out that the taxpayers also approved a quarter percent sales tax for roads and bridges, so.
Yep.
Do we really wanna pull three hundred thousand out of the general government?
Okay, I have a question.
If it's there.
So it's no different than the sheriff?
True, that's just what I'm trying to make.
I mean, he gets, and he's asking for two hundred and fifty thousand, and y'all are asking for a fifty thousand or more?
I hate to cut my foot off, but that's just the point.
Right, but.
Let me put that context in my mind.
Those two hundred thousand of it was not used, correct?
Let me put that context in my mind. What we do here right now is we split between the three of us, a quarter cent per year for the sales.
I know, I do your money.
Yes, ma'am, I'm with you. So that totals up, this last twelve, the first twelve months that we got the appropriation totaled, oh, about, I'm thinking off the top of my head, about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per road district. So we're getting, we get three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per road district for that. Another hundred thousand off here, that's less than a half a million, we probably have, oh, I don't know, a million dollars a year in expenses that we could use to fix roads and bridges. The roads in our county are atrocious, so, and so back to put it into context, that splitting that quarter cent three ways, if we're getting around three hundred and twenty thousand, the sheriff is getting just right at, just under a million dollars a year, right at a million dollars a year on the quarter cent sales tax, and then an additional quarter million dollars. My, my only question there is the operational expenses of the jail, is that, are we continuing to add to cash accounts? I would tell you that, I'm more than happy to give a full financial disclosure of all of my cash accounts and how they're being spent, and how much is in them, versus, versus trying to keep adding money to cash accounts.
But what I'm saying is, is you can't say that about him and then do the same for yourself, like Monty was saying, and if y'all needed that three hundred thousand so bad, two, there's over two hundred thousand left in those accounts that were not spent.
That's not, no.
Did they finally come for them?
Yes.
Right up to the very end?
There's a little bit that's gonna roll back because of the timing that the bill was paid, there's like eleven thousand, because it was an adjustment down on a PO that was paid on the thirtieth, and there was nothing we could do, but the money was used.
If one of the other two commissioners didn't spend their money, I'd be happy to help them with that next year.
I will point out that Sherry and I do the appropriations, and we see all the money in, and just, just for a point, the current sales tax collections that the sheriff's department or the jail is receiving is not covering their monthly salaries currently. Sales tax revenues have dropped, and they, that money that is allocated, in fact, ninety percent of their sales tax collection goes to employee salaries and related expenses such as retirement, FICA insurance, employee-driven costs, and it is not currently covering what they're spending a month in employee costs.
Well, I just didn't wanna kick the sheriff and not kick ourselves, too, so.
Well, I'm not really trying to kick the sheriff, I'm just trying to figure out how much we're.
And how much we're spending, how much we need, and is it, is it necessary?
Estimate of needs instead of estimate of wants, that's all I wanna get to.
I'd like to recognize Mark Charf at this point.
On the district two, one hundred thousand dollars added alarm allocation, we knew in the pipeline that we had a road in progress that we were working with Oklahoma County on, and we knew that was for sure money, and so we waited and waited and waited.
And waited to.
Until we knew how much it was going to be, in the estimate which came before the board, was ninety-one thousand, I think whenever the invoice finally got here, it's eighty-nine thousand, but that's the reason why we procrastinated, was to make sure when Oklahoma County was ready to do their part, we had part and part of the money to match. And we didn't lose the money, it rolled back.
And I support those expenditures more than taking that money that they would've used up for Waterloo out of the CBRI fund that we collect, because we're, we're quickly running out of money there. So, I mean, it's either, I mean, honestly, if we were able to put a million dollars a year from the general fund into roads and bridges, we still wouldn't be able to keep up with what we need to do.
Oh, I know, I drive them every day, and I want the roads to be fixed, too, absolutely, but I was just pointing out, you can't say, like Monty was just saying, you can't kick the sheriff for the same thing that.
Well, and I'm not, again, I'm not trying to kick the sheriff, but the sheriff has fixed costs there on running the jail, or should have some sort of a fixed cost, it should be a known quantity, right? When you, when you talk about roads and bridges and that sort of stuff, you're kinda at the mercy of nature, as we've learned over the last year and a half with all the floods and everything that is happening, so.
So.
Anyway, that's all I have. Thanks, Monty.
I think that.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to tip you.
That includes the meeting with county officers regarding the estimate needs, and.
Do you want that five-minute recess?
Can we, please?
That'd be good. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and appreciate everybody coming. Calling this order back in, in session, consideration possible action within seventy-five months reported, David Ball, emergency team manager, director.
I'm against it.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna lay it over.
The last couple months. Dang, we've got all the spare time we can.
Buddy, what'd you do in between all these meetings?
Oh, there's lots of other stuff going on, these are just the highlights.
Last time you turned one in, it was a full page.
It was, but the font was a little bigger.
Oh.
Shoulda used bigger font.
It just varies from every couple months.
Five.
Those are the highlights.
Well, I make the motion with a prayer.
I'd say that.
Center of knowledge, whatever.
Knowledge.
Is that my morning?
I'll second.
Sweet.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. Jury?
Chair, she's walking in right here.
All right, item five. Meeting of county officers for discussion of employee direct deposit and other county issues.
Quick question of process before we start on item five. Underneath this bundle here, I've got a.
Signature page.
Signature page for the temporary appropriations, do we need to do that on item four?
No, there is a separate item, if you will look at sixteen is to approve the temporaries.
Okay.
I actually have the one you'll sign here, I attached those to go with the bundle just because it was all.
Thanks for the clarification. Thanks, buddy. Proceed.
All right. Direct deposit. Everybody wants it?
Well, I tell you, I talked to all my employees, and honestly, I got some that can't go, what is it, the seven to eight days?
The minimum, and I guess to bring everyone in the loop, the problem with direct deposit for us is that we pay in the moment. In other words, when we write and give that paycheck yesterday, that was for time accrued and done yes, through yesterday. We don't have any arrears that we're paying. The bank, under federal law, must have the deposit information seventy-two hours prior to deposit. You take that seventy-two and back in at minimum the two days that we need to even work up payroll. We would be working payroll up and allowing a week to seven days that we're issuing a check that they still need to work, and that opened the risk to the county of losing a whole lot of money, because as we know, we all have turnover, and someone walks and quits, someone, checks are already done. So the only way around that would be to bump forward. The pay schedule would remain the same, we pay a monthly salary into installments through the fifteenth and through the last business day, but the checks would not go out for those pay slots until extended out. When you take into account holidays and weekends and things like that, you have to build in enough to be able to hit the seventy-two federal requirement, plus the time for us to work it up and process it. At minimum, it would be bumping out the payday seven days. Most places, and I've talked to another county, they went a full ten days out just to allow that, that area. So instead of getting paid the fifteenth, you'd be getting paid the twenty-fifth if you went to the ten days, and on the tenth of the month for that end period. That is the absolute only way, because of our pay structure, to not have a large risk of loss to the county in doing, with the direct deposit. The other thing, and Mormon, I wanted to clarify, one of the items that you did withdraw, we didn't discuss it that day, but it was, and make it a requirement for new hires. I have been advised by SA and I, we cannot require anyone to do direct deposit, it is a choice. That's what I was advised.
Right. So my, I guess my, my point was, as we have new hires come in, they're more apt to sign up for direct deposit than the people that we've got that are in a pay cycle now, especially those that are living paycheck to paycheck, I can certainly understand how ten days is gonna really impact their lives, and we shouldn't do things like that just arbitrarily.
What I've heard in my discussions around in this is so much of what we do in our daily bill-paying lives is already set up, and it's auto-drafted. I know my personal, I have several that on this day, and that day is set based on when I get paid. And so I've heard a lot of hesitation about people afraid to have to try and to attempt to change all of that by moving their paydays out.
Of course, on the other side of that, getting paid by a paper check with auto, auto payments coming out of your bank account, if your paper check doesn't get deposited in your bank account by you for some reason, then you got.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, I also think that, that's on the individual at that point.
Exactly.
What's that money? I got some guys, I hand them their paycheck, they snap, take a picture, and they send mine's deposit.
That's, so many banks are.
So they think they got direct deposits.
Same day, and that's up and coming.
Actually, I think the local banks.
I'm not one of them. I haven't been snapping any pictures about it.
I have one girl that deals in cash, own money, and she does not have a bank account.
The other thing.
It wasn't to force people to, everybody to do this, I mean, my thought, my first thought was, you know, first of all, I don't like manual check registers as, as a, from a, an overview point, as from an audit standpoint, it just opens up.
What are you saying?
Manual, manual check registers, we have a bunch of checks. So I go back to my time in the military, in the National Guard, right, as administrator there, we would have people, we would maintain check registers, right? So they, everybody got paid by a check, and oftentimes, a unit administrator would set up to have the MDA or the part-time soldiers' checks to come to the armory, and then they'd come by and pick up their checks and sign for them. Well, what happens with a, with a check register, it opens up, not that I'm saying that this happens here, but it opens up the possibility of fraud, check fraud, once you have manual checks and check registers.
No, you have to.
Unless, yeah, unless you have strong two-person control over those check registers, I agree, but still, it, it's, it's something that I've always tried to avoid manual checks, I just, I just think there's a better way to do that. Again, not saying that we needed to force everybody that is, likes the manual system that we're in today to change, I just wanted to put in, in place, the opportunity to change that for new hires to come in, so over time, in maybe ten years or so, as people transition in and out and retire and such, that we allow the system to take care of it over time. That's all.
A lot of hires is two weeks out on their paycheck.
Actually, here's the situation with that, and I spoke to Kelpro, because early in these discussions, it was said, well, those that want paper can get their check on the fifteenth, and those that wanna wait can get it on the tenth, and that's not really a, a, a software favorable solution to the software in place. I cannot run the payroll for this pay period and have it do pay here and pay here.
It's either all or nothing.
All are gonna have to bump their payroll out, whether they get a paper check or direct deposit. The only other solution to that is absolutely running two distinctly different payrolls, which negates any cost savings and creates a bigger issue, because now I have more checks to the taxes, and more checks to retirement, and more checks that are generated, because that's, they generate for each. The insurance checks, the tax checks will not be direct deposit, they will always be paper, and then we will handle them as, as we normally do. So it's. do. So, it's not a matter of being able to run a single payroll and just directing when it gets deposited. It's going to all, everyone's payroll run at the same time, just whether they get a paper check or a direct deposit for that one payroll run. So, everybody's pay would have to be bumped out.
And you, to split whatever, you'd have to increase your payroll.
I'd like, I'd like...
On that day.
Yeah.
I'll have it on the fifth day.
Yeah.
Troy said, we'll ten days out. On every check or just the first check?
Well, I mean, essentially, it would become...
The new...
The new, instead of the fifteenth or twenty-fifth, and, and instead of the last business day, the tenth. I mean, that would become the new norm. Um, like I said, the discussions that I've had is several that have said, we don't want to go through the hassle in the fight of trying to change what we have in place with our auto pays and such. Now, I'm not, it's not my place to argue with someone on how they want to pay their bills. And, and, and telling them that you need to go fight with your mortgage company and, and change what day it's gonna draft your check, I, I don't feel that's my place or anyone here's place to, to do that. Um, I'm just saying that those, that would be what would happen for those, because, because we pay the way that we pay. There's, I mean, that's just the way that... To do it the other way and keep it all on the same payday, we open this county up to a risk of loss because we would literally be paying and running payroll out. Um, I'm, I'm, okay, let's, let's, let's use June the thirtieth, which was the paychecks for yesterday. The bank would have to have had that seventy-two hours prior, uh, to that. So, the bank would have to have it on the twenty-seventh, which means at minimum, I'm gonna have to close claims for processing on the twenty-second or so, so that it's turned in on the twenty-second, maybe the morning of the twenty-third, into our office. We've turned in the claim, we're processing it so that we can push the button and get it to the bank the afternoon of the twenty-fourth. They have it to count off their seventy-two hours. What happens, because this check coming on the thirtieth includes these worked hours, so you have, and I'm gonna pick on the sheriff just simply because they have the most employees and the most turnover, somebody walks off the job on the twenty-third, it's gone. It's out. They walk off, and they didn't have anything to make it up. There's no comp, there's no vacation, there's no nothing. This check's gone. It's out there. Now, we go through trying to chase them down and sue them for the return of the funds or whatever. Well, now you've opened up a worse problem and, and, and expense, where what we're doing now, the window is there, and I'm not gonna say there are not times that we have not eaten some wages when this has happened, but it's a smaller window.
That, that problem still exists with the manual check system we have today. It, it, but to a, a...
A much smaller...
In a smaller window, but, but it still exists.
But this is why we can't keep the same dates.
That's why you're saying that needs, it would have...
We'd have to bounce forward.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yes.
So, the, the dates that we were talking about and the number of days that would have to go forward, I think we've discussed anywhere from, at some time between five...
Seven and ten, and the reason for that is you get into, for instance, what we're looking at at this weekend, you have a holiday weekend. Those hours don't count for that seventy-two for the banking. So, you have to kind of look ahead and see what days the banks are open and closed and, and work that in, uh, because you could get yourself in a world of hurt if you told somebody it's gonna be five days and then this holiday comes in and, and it doesn't count. And I think most, I think at minimum, we would look at seven. I mean, standard, even in private sector, is ten, just to allow for any oopses. Any, my computer crashes and we're trying to process, or, you know, any little oops in there kind of working in, into that. Minimum at seven, standard at ten.
Monty, any thoughts?
I can. Um, I have a few employees that like the idea, and then I have others that don't because they're living from week to week, and it'd be a hardship on them.
I'll speak for my office. Nobody in my office wants it because they're not willing to wait the ten days. We all have stuff set up for mortgages to pay on the fifteenth. The bank says that they cannot change that date because that's the day it's due, and it auto drafts on that date. It, a mortgage.
I've heard that from several others on mortgages. It was built into the papers.
The mortgage is built in, and that, they won't change it.
Girl, you too?
Yeah, the girls in my office. I had two that didn't really care. They said it wouldn't be great, that it wouldn't kill them, but most of them said, my mortgage comes out on a date, and I can't change it.
My car insurance comes out on the exact date.
And they won't let them change it.
They won't change it.
My guys are probably fifty, fifty, I mean.
We're not above that.
About, about half. Like I say, some of my guys spend all the money on telephone, they just snap pictures.
Well, I did not know, and I think I told them all, that I just recently learned, even Interbank right here in town is doing the take a picture of a check.
Well, I haven't utilized it.
This is a project cash counter check.
And who won?
If I may, if I may, while we have everyone gathered up, if you guys, and, and, again, this is probably a different department, you guys don't have the turnover, but for any of your employees who do not have established bank accounts or checking accounts, please remind them that on payday, they can go to any F and M Bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank, and cash their check, and not to go to these check cashing places. Uh, we usually get phone calls in the office from the check cashing places because they want to verify that the check's legit before they cash it, and it just kills me that, that they could've went a block down the street and cashed the check.
So, what we're saying, because F and M is the one that we...
Exactly. There is no...
They will cash it.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Speaking for every county employee, I have a solution to your direct deposit problem. Temporarily double their wages for one month. This would not apply to officers, of course, and I bet you they would all go along with it.
Bet you're right.
Yeah.
Well, here's the thing, I, I've told the board, I was never adamantly opposed to it. These are just the, the absolute facts in getting there.
Yeah.
Can we put this baby to rest?
I don't, I mean, I'd...
Tell a good son of a gun starts crying again, I gotta... Because half my employees said, yeah, they like it, but I don't know that they care for the ten-day delay, ten to two weeks delay, and...
I don't think it was the electronic part of it. It's the delay is the only part.
Exactly.
That's the part that they can't deal with because...
Exactly.
That money's gotta be there.
Exactly. And in today's modern world, take a picture, throw it into the bank, same-day deposit.
Well, we got all the county officers gathered up. Something else I'd like to discuss is maintenance items. We budgeted seventy-eight thousand last year, last fiscal year. Me and Troy met with several different contractors trying to get some stuff done around the courthouse. None of them responded back. So, if y'all got some maintenance items or some items you'd like to see addressed, I mean, please let us know so we can give them...
Yes. And that, did get in contact with a contractor that is interested in coming and talking to you guys about doing work, so.
Did get the concrete out front replaced, which was, was very nice.
Is that, that's in your other research, right?
The, the peeling paint on this building. Now, if we get the paint off courthouse.
Yeah. So, y'all got some items that you'd want addressed, and please let us know.
Okay. I think we have a couple, or at least one broken window in this building, right out here, it needs to be fixed.
Okay. So, Chairman, seeing as there's no real, uh, action to take on item five, I'm not sure, I mean, other than just moving on to the next one, if we're, if we beat this cat flat, then so be it.
Y'all got anything else?
Good.
All right.
Nice try, Mark, on that one, but...
Sound like a win-win to this, Floyd.
All right, moving to item seven, consideration possible action approving county EOP plan. Dave?
I haven't actually, if everybody's had a chance to review it, we talked about it back in May thirty-first. I can mail it back out.
So, we're not doing it all there?
Three.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Three other guys. That is the plan.
It's supposed to be tough, and you can go to. See you later.
Yeah, fine. How you running, buddy?
Yeah, thanks for you two saying, I appreciate...
Yeah, buddy.
But those are, that would be the approval pages for the plan. It hasn't been sent to the city of Guthrie yet. I still have that to do, but...
Emergency operations plan for Bowden County and the city of Guthrie.
So, if it hasn't been reviewed by the city yet, I'm just thinking out loud here, would it be, uh, something that we'd want to pursue to have sort of maybe a joint conference to talk about it and all of us agree together, rather than us signing it and sending it, throwing it over the wall to them and say, hey, here's what we think, and...
Now, they already discussed this.
They, they've had copies of the plan. I sent them copies of the, the draft plan, but it has not been on their agenda for them to sign. The way I've done this in the past is you guys have signed it, and I've sent it to them for their approval.
Much the way the civil defense contract...
Right. And if they don't approve it, then they'll have changes, and they'll come back, and we'll have to re-approve it.
And we can change it. It's a living document. We can go back and change it anytime. If anybody, if you see something next week and say, oh, you know what, that's not right, we can go back in and revise it.
Which would require a new...
Yeah, once a year to come to you guys to... I haven't come to you the last couple of years because I had been working with OEM on the different format. There was some, some questions on the format that they wanted it in, on the FEMA guidelines.
So, you're not anticipating any kind of...
This, we should be good here as far as the, the format. Um, I have not, I have, did have a couple of conversations with Steve Gatling, the mayor. He had a couple of questions on some things, and I've answered those, but I haven't heard anything from anybody from the city. I know Eric has reviewed it, Don has reviewed it. Um, it was sent to them, but I mean, I think we can do whatever you guys...
That was just a question.
...seen in the past.
I, I said we approved it.
Was that a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which county are we mitigating here in this?
Oh, oh, seventy-seven.
Isn't that, uh, they got their responsibility? You don't wanna get you started.
That's both of them, and so item eight is consideration possible action on county mitigation plan. That's that second.
Our mitigation plan.
Same thing.
Yes. Um, we, FEMA and the state OEM has had some changes. We had signed a contract with the vendor about three years ago now, give or take. There were some major changes, and that contractor let us out of that contract. FEMA, we have two options. We can go out for bids, get a contractor, apply for a mitigation grant if there's money there to help pay for that plan, or state OEM has just this spring worked with a couple of counties and with FEMA to come up with a plan to make the plan a lot easier. And so, basically, OEM is working on a template that they said they will send me, and basically, I will fill in what pertains to our county. Our county is gonna be basically the same as Oklahoma County as far as all that. Our current mitigation plan is somewhere around three hundred and forty pages, give or take. The new way that FEMA has approved, working with OEM, it'll be somewhere between sixty and seventy-five pages. It'll, it'll thin it down tremendously. It won't have all of the fluff that the contractor plans have had in them in the past. It will require a little more work. It'll require a lot more work on my end. I've had several meetings with OEM. Um, I've talked with one of the counties that did it. They, they liked the way everything went. OEM is going to be having a mitigation class the middle of next month. I feel comfortable tackling it and doing it in-house. It, um, geez, it's gonna be some more work on my end, but it's, it, if we were to get a mitigation grant, it's not our money locally, but it's our money in a roundabout way because we all pay taxes. Um, probably somewhere on a mitigation grant, if we go out for bids, it's probably, and I don't know for sure till we would actually go for bids, probably somewhere around thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Majority of that, that would pay for that. Um, probably what Annie told me, I would say the seventeenth was the last time I talked with Annie Vest from OEM. Um, probably looking at about four months by the time we send in the application to, to see if we were approved or not, and then go out for bids.
What action are we, do we have here for the mitigation plan?
Asking for your blessing or your permission for me to do it in-house. I didn't want to do, I didn't want to start the process without you having your blessing.
Right.
On...
The item just read all the information I had.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there's, and, and, because I don't want to keep picking on Troy.
Well, and I, that's my fault.
No, no, about, you know, the detail associated with our agenda items and, or, because now Troy's gotta add additional detail to the minutes to make this make sense to anybody that wants to go back and see what we've done. So, what do we really approve? What action are we really taking here, right?
I just felt I should have your blessing. Do we go out and get a hired contractor to do our plan, or do we do it in-house?
You can do it.
So, that, and I, I...
If I can clarify, Commissioner, I, I really think the action that is possible based on the presentation would be for this board to either choose to locate grant funds to pay fifty thousand dollars for hiring a specialist, or to have our emergency management director proceed with OEM's form. I think, I think you could. However, if you're not comfortable with that, I agendized the information I was given.
So, yeah, no, no worries. So, if we could, if we could put that in the form of a, um, statement that we could approve, then, or disapprove, but probably approve, then I would have no problem making that motion.
Okay, so, we can clarify, if, if I may?
To allow, to allow that to be done in-house.
Okay, so that, that, upon request of the emergency management director or the presentation of the two options, and I'll, I'll put some in the minutes, too.
If you pursue both options? Because if we can get fifty thousand for FEMA to get a...
No, but that's what he's saying.
It would be better from, from my, from right now, everything that I know today, it would be better for our perspective if I do it, if we do it in-house. And I'm gonna be doing most of the work, but I'm gonna need you guys to participate in some meetings, and we're gonna need, if Crescent School District wants to participate, they're gonna have to come to a meeting or two...
Okay.
And participate. It's just like, if we have a contractor do the plan, you gotta participate. If you don't participate, you cannot be part of the plan, of the mitigation plan.
So, to clarify, I think the motion, or the suggested motion...
Is that...
Would be that this board approves emergency manager David Ball as compiling, uh, the county mitigation plan based on the OEM template, or the, based on the template created by OEM.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds real good.
And I would just like to add...
I'll second.
So, we're dealing with FEMA. They could come tomorrow and say, you know what, you can't do this week. You gotta come at time. There's always a chance. Yeah, I don't foresee that. I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but...
If FEMA comes to talk to you, send it to...
Yeah.
Or send the sheriff. All those in favor?
Thank you all very much.
Oh, she carried.
You vote.
I think.
Not you. He did call the vote. Marvin voted.
I did. I did. I seconded it. And you want, uh, do you want, are you an a?
Yes.
FEMA three months.
All right. Item number nine, consideration possible action on financial statement of resale property fund.
This is submitted annually on the first of July from the treasurer of the resale fund. I will point out that this year, and as this works its way down, a hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars forty-eight cents is being returned to entities as in excess, and that money is divided in thirds to, one third to the county general, one third to, is divided amongst all the schools, and then a third to the cities, which is a statute that no one understands because cities don't get ad libor.
There you are. And they're gonna get ad libor this time?
Well, no, that's not ad libor.
Okay.
The resale property fund, accumulated funds from fines and penalties of non-paid taxes.
It's non-appropriated funds. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And it's also what Sherry maintained, the majority of the funds that maintain her office, just from there.
I'll move. We're through. Second.
All in favor? Item number ten, consideration possible action resolving, approving, resolution approving monetary compensation for overtime... Item number 10, consideration possible action on resolving, approving resolution approving monetary compensation for overtime hours in the election board.
Again, this is an annual fiscal year. When the election board has to do elections for entities that are not public, state, county, for instance, the school districts, the schools have to pay the cost for the overtime of the personnel for that election. Those funds are reimbursed to the accounts of the election board that has to pay them. So, this is an annual that allows that for the next fiscal year.
Right, the motion.
I'll second. All taken.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consideration possible action on resolution establishing Logan County investment policy for fiscal year 1617.
This is again another annual fiscal year. The statute requires that this board, and this is come based with the treasurer's office, where she can invest or deposit funds into the different types of things.
Investment policy. We definitely need investment. I'll move that we approve.
I don't have a problem approving it. I'm just curious. Surplus, the term surplus county funds, who determines what surplus?
I, I think that's an old reference, to be honest with you.
I'm just, how much, I mean, it's just to quantify what, how much we're talking about investing, I mean.
I, I think the way that would happen and what used to happen is how this county got CDs that we currently have were from surplus funds. Because at one time, and it could be again, I suppose, at one time, the theory was anything that was unused that had been appropriated to county general at the close of business, up to the end of the fiscal year, was deposited into surplus and invested. That's where the CDs from 50 years ago came from. Obviously, times have changed and financial needs and we can't afford to do that. We'd love to afford to do that, but we need that money re-appropriated. But that, that's the idea of surplus funds.
Yeah, I understand the idea. I just wanted to understand what, who determines what surplus and what's not surplus? Is that the county treasurer at that point?
Marvin, I couldn't answer that.
I have a problem signing it then.
We've not had surplus funds to have to address. I think the idea of that was just if there were, if there was a windfall, if we had a lawsuit or something and we had a windfall.
If we could change the wording here to invest surplus funds as determined by the board of commissioners, I, I think that.
Let me do some checking.
So, I mean, because the board is the one that signed the investment policy, right?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Our policy should be to control how much we invest in that sort of stuff. It may be just a nitty-gritty point, but it, it doesn't.
What I will check on is that is directed by title. So, I don't know if, if that is the way it's, you know what I'm saying? I can check. If you want to table the item, we can do that and I'll see what I can, if that is the way that's laid out.
Is it something that we need to approve today or is it something we can't wait till the 15th? Just to kind of.
I don't see no surplus coming.
Well, I understand. It's just.
I mean, right now, so I don't think it hurt.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it either, other than, like I said, nobody, nobody's determined what constitutes surplus funds.
We just add it in our motion, you know, we'll approve this based on our approval of what else surplus?
That would be up to this board. I mean, however.
I, I would be good with that.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, Monty's amended his motion, so it's going to be approved contingent upon?
If we have.
Any surplus?
Any surplus funds be approved by the BOCC.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12, consideration possible action on resolution designating depository banks for fiscal year 1617.
Again, another annual requirement for each fiscal year. This just lists the banks, not that we necessarily do, but all of the banks that the treasurer may deposit county funds. And they're basically all the local banks. We do utilize some of them currently. We have some that do not, but, but it allows her to if she were to need to.
And now virtually every bank in G-.
Pretty much.
Yeah, Logan County maybe. That'd be every bank in Logan County, I think.
Yeah, I don't think there's a Bank of Oklahoma in Logan County, is there?
No, I don't think so.
I don't like Oklahoma State Bank, yeah.
Here at the National Bank.
Isn't that?
Yeah.
What's the one down town? That's Bank of Okla-? Oh, maybe it's Bank First, I'm thinking. And, and I think, if I remember correctly, Bank of Oklahoma was put on there because of some investment step from way back, but.
I don't see Bank of Oklahoma.
Is it not? It's Bank First.
Bank First.
Okay, not Bank of Oklahoma.
Yeah, and then Oklahoma State Bank.
We currently have funds in Oklahoma State Bank and at Farmers.
See, like one time Sherry told me that Oklahoma State Bank paid more interest than any other.
That's what she looks for is more interest.
I don't remember.
And working with them.
We used to, Bank First used to be our primary bank. And then they decided that they wanted to start feing us to death to the tune it was going to be like $800 a month in bank fees then. So, she moved out of Bank First.
I move we approve the resolution designating depository banks for fiscal year 2617.
I'll second. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 13. Item 13, consideration possible action on resolution depositing juvenile transportation fees into sheriff's fee account, fee cash account for fiscal year 1617.
This is the juvenile detention transportation checks that we get from the state for the sheriff's department moving the juveniles around the state. The law, statute dictates that it goes back into their fee cash account and this just backs that up.
See, that's where they kind of got it wrong. I mean, he gets money for transporting them and we pay the bills on the end there. Just, I know we can't change the law, but, yeah, look at that.
ODOT? Good guess. You're almost 90% sure when you say ODOT is a problem that we're, that's it, but you missed it on this one, missed it that 10%. Somebody other than ODOT.
And may I ask what, on the surplus funds, what law that was besides?
The requirement for the, I don't have it extended. I'll get it to you.
Item 14, consideration possible action on proving fiscal year 1617.
I got it.
I didn't have action on the juvenile transportation.
You did. Do we have a motion on it?
Title 62, section 348 dot 1.
I'll move that we approve.
What are we approving?
The juvenile detention fees.
I'll second. All in favor? Motion carries, consideration possible action on proving fiscal year 1617 software maintenance agreement with TM Consulting for the treasurer's office.
This is for the software that the treasurer utilizes their own.
How much is that?
It is $20,830, $32 for the year.
$20,000 bucks. Crazy.
It's like a hundred thousand dollars you got done last two days on software.
Throw that money around. Maybe not quite that much. Technology is sure nice, ain't it?
Yeah. I move we approve. I don't think we get a choice on this one. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye. I think we need to start doing roll call like we're going to see.
You want to do a roll call?
Or we can get, we can set up some push buttons like they do at the.
Yeah, there you go. That's why we need a podium. We need a.
And item 15 is a duplication, so we need to skip it.
Skip it. Item 16, considering possible action on improving application for temporary appropriations to general fund for fiscal year 1617.
All right, what I do with that? Okay, because in all of my franticness to get all this done, I made a couple of typos that were addressed as we went through these with item, the earlier item. I have made the corrections here to that for you all to sign and approve this as a temporary appropriations for the general fund accounts.
And you moved the money to pay the insurance?
I did increase the amount so that we could cover the insurance.
I move we approve temporary appropriation request.
I don't know.
You don't know?
Okay. I think we better. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was wondering which way you were going on that.
Aye.
Motion carries. I was just trying to speed things up.
That's got to be a mess, wasn't it?
It would be.
All right, item 17, consideration possible action on approving fiscal year 1617 service contract with Schneider Electric for the sheriff's office.
This is their backups and electric protection service for the tower in the jail. It's an annual contract, $5,625.
Is it for backup power supply systems?
Yes.
Boy, it's off the pricey list.
Is that on the generator?
It's on the tower and all the systems in the tower.
Tower, but you said towers.
Their control tower where all the computers and the inmate oversights and all of that system.
That may be place up there.
Observation day.
Where they observe everybody all the time.
Looking doors and.
Make certain that they are behaving themselves. And they aren't, make certain that they are behaving themselves.
I move we approve.
What's the tally up to now, Chris?
That one wasn't as big as it hit, but it's still there.
Head to head, yeah. I'll second Marvin's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All opposed.
Item 18, consideration possible action on proving resolution renewing lease purchase agreement with Welch State Bank for district two as three belly dock truckers.
Against this. Hey Troy, this conversation while we're signing these papers there, the other day, I guess I was at the CED meeting. And you know how we've always said a county officer up for an election can't purchase equipment?
That's what I'm.
Yeah, well, he's about to expand on blow your mind, you're just saying.
What, what, maybe the auditors and some of them are saying, it's not just that Mike was up for an election, it's all of us. No one in the county is what they're saying.
Can't.
Cannot buy anything.
Can't buy, can't buy or sell anything. We're all constrained in an election year. All three, all three county commissioners, not just one.
Not just the secret sub.
In the years that I have personally and multiple times verified, usually with Cheryl at the auditor's office, it has been to that person, not the entire entity being crippled and hands tied.
But what, what they're saying at the CED is that a lot of the counties, even their district attorneys are backing that up and saying that no county commissioner can do any of that during an election year. Not just, not just the one that's up for election.
You know what I find really interesting? And I had this talk with the auditors on site because there's a really bad habit of them making these type of rulings and not telling anybody and not, and then they come out and do an audit and you get deemed for something that had always been okay before.
But what's really interesting is in the audit business, especially in one as big as the state auditor's office where they have different regions, you'll have auditors that have different, differing opinions from one region to another on how they write things up.
I'm going to search my email because I may have that very answer as issued, not only from the auditor's office, but with Lowell.
They, they recommend it down there that you visit with your DA to get their blessing.
Yes, they said if you get your ADA or DA, ADA out on the same limb with you, that you're in good stead. And I kind of agree with that, but.
But that, it's always been for the officer, not crippling. And it was only to the point that they knew they would or would not succeed themselves in office.
And it just doesn't make sense. Every two years you're in the.
Well, I guess some county officer down there has had this run-in and they tell me you cannot sell or buy anything because one of the seats is up.
What's that little county next to Cleveland County down there?
Garland.
McLean? McLean County, yeah, I think it was the guys from McLean County said that they were having that problem down there.
I wonder if the other two commissioners were trying to buy something for the other district.
And even selling equipment, all of that, all of those restrictions are on all three.
What, what we can do on your lease renewals? I mean, you've got to move forward.
That's right.
Paul, you might throw that below one of these days.
Well, I'm going to check because I think I've already got.
An email on that. I think we've required about that.
We've covered that over the years.
In, in, in past times.
Item 18, I recommend, I move we approve Mike's lease purchase.
Second. All those in favor?
Come on, Mike, you wasted time.
I'm waiting for another one.
I were hired.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, you made the motion, sure, but I didn't hear the eye. All right, I say aye. Motion carries. Number 19, consideration possible action on approving resolution renewing lease purchase agreement with Empire Financial for the following equipment for district two. And these are, okay, these are my graders. I believe. No, they aren't.
They're MacTrucks.
Those are a MacTruck. I'm sorry, those are a MacTruck.
The resolution does identify them as MacTrucks.
All right. I should have seen them numbers. Yeah, these are a MacTrucks.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard two ayes, so I'll make that three ayes. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item 20, consideration possible action on improving resolution renewing lease purchase agreement with Lord Power Machinery for the following equipment for district number two. And as I was constrained, I may not be now, but we do want to renew these leases, so.
Was that a motion?
That is a motion.
See that, when you said that, I've also had Cheryl tell me that, that a lease renewal would not fall under that statute because it's the normal course of an existing business.
Exactly.
I'll second Mike's motion.
All those in favor?
Believe it or not, Troy, there are district attorneys out there that don't share that opinion.
Oh, I'm not surprised.
I mean, there's some, there are some weird ones out there.
I think the law also says that if you have a circumstances that throws something out of order, the ex-ide's board can authorize.
In the case of an emergency.
That motion, 21, carries. Item 21, consideration possible action on improving resolution renewing lease agreement with STC Business World for the following equipment for district number two called Kyle Sturrock, whatever it is, copy printer.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 22, consideration possible action on improving resolution renewing mining agreement with Tim Stover for district number two. amend the motion pending his signature, which I have not had the opportunity to get out there and do, but I do know that he will do this.
I'll make the motion approve. Continue to debate. You get the signature.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mike, what is he mining for you?
Uh, that's the shale pit and we do the mining and pay for the shale.
That's the King Fisher shale pit?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Item 23, consideration possible action on improving resolution approving contract with Syntest Corporation for district number two.
That's it, it's closing?
Yeah. Yeah.
You're in force.
You're in force. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is it an aye?
He's dead.
He's in.
Okay.
I'm in the middle.
All those opposed. I think I'll move the middle so you can hear, out of each ear. Yeah.
All right, what item we on, Mike?
Uh, motion carries, all right. Item twenty-four, consideration possible action on approving fiscal year sixteen seventeen juvenile detention service contract with Texas County Juvenile Detention Service.
They try not to use them, but we actually contract with all thirteen because it, we never know where they'll have to get sent. And the Office of Juvenile Affairs actually determines who goes where.
One of those three kids in Texas County meant to be sent around.
On favor?
The juvenile report.
Aye.
Go way up there. I'll go ahead, Josh. We all said aye. Okay, motion carries. We are gonna get some lines.
Yeah.
All right. Twenty-five. Consideration possible action on improving detention transportation payment for May of sixteen and the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Juvenile. Transportation.
That's somebody we approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Turn the volume down.
Item twenty-six, consideration possible action on proving resolution certifying that no federal funding will be utilized for environmental currents for county road. EWF seventy-one.
What in the world is this?
Don't look at me.
It's yours?
Oh, this is a. This is on a project I'm doing, it's on a. I can't even call the circle number now, we're trying to get a new bridge. There's, there's no federal money going into that project. I have to approve this with. Trying to think of the engineer's name.
Oh, so we have to have a resolution saying there's no federal funds utilized on this so you can get out of doing that, I, I get you.
Right.
I said move we approve.
Aaron, Aaron Penley.
Cobb.
Cobb, was Cobb, but C, they changed it now.
CNC or something.
CNC, yeah. So.
Margaret made the motion, I'll, Mike seconded it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You gotta have the DA sign on it.
Twenty-seven, Mike has withdrawn as a no action.
All right, so item twenty-eight, consideration possible action on proving resolution disposing of air impact wrench for District Number Three. She just told you no action on that because.
No, I thought it was no, you told me no action on twenty, on the business world.
We gotta do twenty-seven, it's twenty-eight.
Well, make up your mind, Mike. Hey, listen to me. Mike, can you hear me? Yeah, you said twenty-seven, I don't know, all right, on twenty-seven then backing up. I can tell you a story about the impact wrench. I told her to make sure she take it off the inventory because we've done a resolution in March. I picked a resolution number within the book, you know, where we disposed of it. She misunderstood me and made up a new resolution, put it on the agenda for us to dispose of it again. All right.
Don't worry, bro, we got a wacky thing coming.
Yeah. So, consideration impossible action on improving resolution renewing fiscal year sixteen seventeen maintenance agreement with STC Business World for District Three.
Move that we approve.
Michael, if you're friends with me, I'm going back, gotta go work.
Get on it. About time you started turning something.
But how much is that?
If Chris and you were this.
Yeah, we had it on that program. Because you were charging us.
You were, you were, your institution was.
And it never breaks, right?
Smoke your cane back?
And then you have to buy all that toner from them, it's just a real, it's cheaper, it was cheaper for me to go out and buy.
Do we have action on twenty-seven?
I have a motion and I don't have a second.
Copy.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So no action on twenty-eight?
Right. Twenty-nine, consideration possible action on improving maintenance service agreement for copper top gear printer for Commissioner's Office General Government.
This is for the new one that, that.
And who's this with?
This is for this one in here with STC. Uh, the, the equipment itself was bought with cash, this is for the monthly copy fees and, and maintenance.
Good. Buy a new printer every year for that, or copy. I think that one is. Couldn't get five years old. What's a copy like that cost?
Think that the purchase on the copier was like fifty-six hundred dollars. And then that, the monthly, which includes all the toner and all the service calls and. I didn't look to see what that.
Yeah. Over, over about five years, you put enough in this to buy a new one. That's all I'm saying. From a monetary standpoint, I, I really don't like making service agreements that much. Unless it's something that you just die if you don't have somebody out there in ten minutes to fix it when it breaks, you know, if it's, if it's.
But see, in my office with the copier for land records, I'm in that position.
And that's, that's a little bit different, the, oh, that's not good.
That's this one's being worked like.
So she can always use tissues as well.
All, all I'm saying is the copier piece of it, you know, there's, there's multi-function devices, uh, I mean, you can buy a nice multi-function device for seven hundred dollars, real nice. It makes copies, it does scans, it prints, it faxes, it does all that stuff.
Hey Cynthia, is that near?
Yes, Cynthia.
Because she's been telling me that this company ain't working right. Hey Cynthia, the copier?
Yes.
Was looking at this maintenance agreement, did you not tell me there's something wrong with that and you thought we needed it?
The, the other one, the old one? The old one was just, it was slow, it kept messing up all the time, they were having to come and just work on it.
So it's not this one?
It's not this one.
The contract is for this one.
This contract is for this one.
Then.
I'm replacing it.
And it includes all your toner?
Includes all my toner, it's less than what we paid last year for the maintenance.
All right, I'll make the motion approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks. I was, you told me we needed a new one, I didn't want to spend seven hundred dollars on agreement for getting there.
I am, I'm buying the next one, I think.
Consideration possible action on proving fiscal year sixteen seventeen maintenance agreement with FinTech Systems.
Your clerk has a typo.
I was gonna, yeah.
It is FinTech, uh, which is the, the, the boss of Fuel Master. So this is his Fuel Master, uh, service for the.
We have, we have below ground tanks and that's what this is about.
Need some of that FinTechs.
FinTechs?
You do, you don't.
Yeah.
I need a big dose of it. Eleven forty-nine.
This is a little more, we can help finish that.
That is, I'll trim you right down. I'll, I'll move that we approve. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration possible action on.
We have them for items thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thirty-one, thirty-two taken care of, thirty-three.
Get your hands ready, gentlemen.
It's the new year.
Okay, so these are moving money from the cash or non-appropriated accounts from the fiscal year that just ended yesterday into this new fiscal year, so there's operating funds in those accounts. And just to clarify, most of the money moves in total. However, in deciding how to do this, I have to look at unpaid purchase orders that are encumbered but not yet paid. So kind of based on the account and the amount of money in unpaid POs, we hold some in reserve. So if anything were to go over or what, we would have money, so not all the funds move a hundred percent, uh, on those.
Two signatures, huh? Initials work.
Do they?
Yeah, yeah, they do, don't they? Just do that.
There's a lot of stuff you, you all will initial when it comes through here.
Sure. Like this. Mike, can you read each, can I read one?
Yep.
Um, well, I'll read them, Sheriff's Drug War picture, seventeen thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
I think he was pulling your chain there, Mike.
Yeah, really. Love playing. About the same.
Mike, neither one of us is on excise board.
That's true. Old son of a gun.
Move that.
I sure should do that. Again.
Nor do I want to be.
Sorry. Get upstairs there. Yeah, get upstairs there.
We need to be up here.
Get it up again.
Well, I, I just followed the chairman's.
Yeah.
I didn't have enough lights in the office before I get one of those.
One of them would be sufficient. Just get me on the right course.
Let's go back down there.
Yeah. They only have initials to go through, this one, let's go back there. Yeah.
I, I'll get his car in a second.
Yeah.
So resell property fund, you don't have to pay your taxes?
No, you don't have to pay the taxes, we will come get your property, but you don't have to pay it. The county will come get your property.
All right.
Because after all, you're just leasing your property from the state. You're really on it.
You don't love this one.
And I own my house.
You and the state own it.
They initial too, don't they?
Pardon me?
They initial as well, don't they?
The excise board?
That's.
An old Dave, old Dave Ramsey deal. I own my car, don't make a pain, see, see if you own your car.
Dave Ramsey's one of my heroes.
Yep.
Yeah, buddy.
So I don't like borrowing money.
Yep.
Either in personal or in business, it's, sometimes in business it makes, if you put a case together to do it. It may help. But going in debt is never a good idea if you don't have to.
I went and bought some suits, hopefully I'll never need them, but, uh, they say you can apply for a card and say forty-five percent, which is quite a bit. And I, I haven't had a credit card in ten years, house paid off, I bought lots of third car cars with my own, with cash. And, uh, so I filled it out knowing I was gonna delete it, and I got denied.
No credit?
No credit, which means, uh, credit score means I love debt, basically, so. I love, man, I got denied, it's kind of, takes me back when I was turning eighteen, I had to add a post sign for my cell phone, first cell phone.
Well, I give money to people, I've given several vehicles to people, and if they pay me back, I might do it again. But otherwise, I consider that to be all right, you need some, some gas money, here you go. You want to back me back, maybe I'll do this again when you need some gas money.
And if you give it to them, why don't you expect them to pay you back?
Uh, only if they want to get given again.
Take Troy on the.
You know, it's a loan, but it's a handshake loan.
Troy, on the, uh, DA's, uh, I noticed we were transferring for their, uh, law library. And this morning, uh, she said that they didn't use all.
Different account.
So, okay, so, yeah, but I still, I still have a question, about what, so. The DA's law library, that's, that's fully reimbursed back to the state if whatever they, whatever they use, right?
Okay, no, they're two separate things.
Just their, just their payroll, just the payroll, is?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, uh, well, it's not payroll.
So.
The thirty-six thousand is for operations.
Yeah, so the, the state reimburses the county for that, that much. So my, my question though is, she's contracting with NEXIS Lexus for automated law library, which a lot of law offices use that. But it's not, it's not as much as allocated, I mean, six thousand is allocated every year by, is that by statute?
Well, what I'm trying to clarify is the law book account you saw in the general budget and what you see here as law library are not the same.
Right, I understand, that, that popped in my memory that question. Earlier this morning.
Okay.
I'm not trying to correlate the two together.
Okay.
So again. Does that go back in our general fund or does, or?
The only reimbursement we receive is for, from the thirty-six thousand.
So if the.
And it goes to general fund.
So if they only spend twenty-five hundred out of the six thousand, then the rest of it goes back in, okay, that's all I, thank you.
Correct. Just like why happened on my waterly road was that I was gonna use that, kind of grant for that. It came in ninety-one thousand was the estimate. And we had thought that we would have gotten that a whole month, maybe two months before. So I was waiting on it and it came in at the last minute, we didn't have a chance to spend that excess money on where else.
I'm gonna pass this out, uh, Mark went and printed out the, um, the statute on that investment. And it does say, except as otherwise provided for by law, county treasurer when authorized by the Board of County Commissioners by a written investment policy. Ordinance or resolution or the treasurer of any senior town when authorized by an appropriate governing body, uh, by a resolution or policy shall invest monies in the custodian of the treasury in direct obligations of the United States government collateral, collateralized or insurance certificate, savings accounts, investments authorized by section three, forty-eight, twenty-three, county municipal or school district direct debt obligation. Provisions of this section shall not apply to investments made by organizations of municipalities created for the secure purpose of securing benefits services. I'm gonna pass these down, I don't know if that helps you more than or not.
It does, it, it's exactly what I thought. It's the, it's up to the Board of County Commissioners to determine what's excess to be invested, is what it sounded like to me. So yes, thank you.
Mike, you done signing all of them?
Nope.
Here's cash fines.
These are done. Cash fines.
Troy, I know this may sound like a pain, but all of these that we're signing today?
Mm-hmm.
Got to get a copy of those.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that weed on there. Oh, we have more pages, I didn't notice. Still on more practice tickets? Yeah. That's how I pick them up. Yeah.
Most of this will fit the spreadsheet, the SA and I spreadsheet for county budget two is, uh, the cash accounts that move over. This is end of year, right?
Well.
End of year transfers.
Right, and the, the, um, and there'll be more that transfers because as things pay off and we have adjustments, so, so, uh, this isn't a hundred percent on every account being moved.
Okay, so what I'd be looking for here in the next month or so, probably not, is, uh, a, a summary of those accounts and.
So basically you want.
At the end of that.
An account summary.
Yes.
The reason I brought this, I was not anticipating that question, but if there was any question about how the monies were moved or why, because it's really left up to me. And I wanted to have it that, that's how I determined it. But I can get you an account summary.
Thank you. So who keeps flipping these things? Are you doing that?
Not that, no way.
I mean, every one of them is turning, well, I lied, that one's, so.
I didn't think I was.
Still cold?
No, I'm good now, thank you.
All right, where's this tax? Two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
On the highway sales tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this to a specific road district or?
If you'll look each, each district's account number.
Oh, okay, never mind. I see now, I think. So, uh, let me see if I can interpolate here. Ninety-one-ten is district one.
Yes.
Ninety-one-two, twenty is district two.
Correct.
That's three.
And, and Marvin, let me explain on more. I'm moving a hundred and fifty thousand over there. You still have a hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, um, in POs that are encumbered but yet to be paid.
Right.
You have an unencumbered balance of a hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
I moved a hundred and fifty, left the eleven-five just on the, in case of, once those POs clear and we no longer have a hundred and eighty-three outstanding, anything unencumbered will then follow. And be transferred.
Okay. As long as it all works out.
Yeah, definitely sign that transaction up.
Right, do you?
Three, three.
I'll think about that.
That's all pretty nice.
I'll, I'll, I'll give that some thought, not much, but I appreciate it. You're a nice guy. So I guess our, uh, Shadow Light, what is it? Not Shadow Light, no.
Sherwood Lane.
Sherwood Lane hasn't got back with us on bid specs yet, so they haven't figured out what they wanted to do. They, they asked me whether or not.
Right, and Garrett called me, um, after he got your email, because he called me, I'm trying to think what day it was. It may have been yesterday, this week has been earlier.
Yeah.
Um, and I tried to explain to him and reiterate what you had tried to explain. But what I told him that I would work towards doing was putting together bid specs that would allow the option of the petromol as an option, so they could pick, that we'll, we'll do options within the specs. And that would allow them then to see financially where exactly that they can go.
So he said, uh, if I remember right, that they're going to get together and figure out the thickness they want, all that stuff, because they can't afford three inches.
Now, actually, I, I was under the understanding from talking with you and then with him, that what we'll do is when we send the bids out, we're going, my brain went to, we will have an option one, a three-inch pour, so many gallons of this and petromol.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is they're combined fifty, how many, fifty-two thousand, is that what it is?
Combined, they're going to have about fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven thousand. If, they can't afford a three-inch pour.
Right. Well, and I even kind of tried to talk to him a little bit about the petromol mat and that basically what they needed to decide is, was that four thousand four hundred dollars in mat worth taking away from asphalt?
Yeah, well, and, and what I tried to explain to him was that a three-inch pour was going to cost them over sixty thousand dollars and they don't have that kind of money.
Right, right.
And then they don't have a petromat and they don't.
Well, and then what he did tell me is that, and I, and I tried to correct this with him, I'm not sure I was successful, because of the, um, figuring out the actual width and length, you know, to calculate the asphalt needed. And he said, well, I went through four spots down the road with my tape measure and were at nineteen feet. And I said, tried to explain to him that that not, because he went with the tape measure, may not be as accurate as the asphalt company and when they look at it and, so at the pre-bid conference, that might be something worth double checking.
Yeah, we always, I mean, we figured twenty-two foot wide road.
And that's why he's saying, well, we gained.
Yeah.
Because it's only nineteen.
He could, he could have a point there, but still.
I would feel better if the asphalt vendor.
You said that, yes, I'm with you.
And I tried to impress upon him that that would be, uh, something to address and handle at a pre-bid conference and let the vendors hold on to that dimension.
Trying to draw anyone in here besides Sheriff.
So, did y'all, did y'all not like this one?
I didn't.
Sales tax on fire districts, I can understand that. Which one's that?
Let's step outside.
You can be here and turn every other one around for me.
Thank you. I mean, that was, uh.
Skip that one over there, and you'll see it. See ya.
He just tried to go by.
That explains the blank spot where your initials should have been.
Sheriff for ball.
Sheriff for ball.
Sherwood.
Never would have guessed my, my property would have been in District Three. Sure is. Head edge.
So I knew there's something good about it.
There's a whole bunch of, of the city here that's in District Three.
Yep.
I never thought of Monty as being a city dweller.
Being in that population.
I always thought of.
Either you can get into the miles.
Everyone was getting mad about the city not doing the my dock, but turns out it's District Three's fault.
Yeah, hey, I can't do more than city limits.
I've, I've got something to report on that too when we get to the commissioners. I got about eight things to.
My dock?
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to return, rate and being with them too.
Well, maybe if we don't get done before midnight, I think we're out.
Ah, we're finally down to District One.
In case you just couldn't staple that big yellow stack out of cover sheet and sign it. I can see why the color was underneath the, uh, mannequins.
You want a copy of all these too, Marvin?
No.
Order some more color.
No, well, that's why I revised my request of that spreadsheet instead of everyone of those, because I would have just had to put it in spreadsheet. Troy's already got that down.
I'm sure it was a fancy software.
Yep.
I'd say that would be one software too.
It's not cheap. Now I gotta buy a new copier.
You got something to do?
Man, I was just caught up.
Here's some yellow.
And a new server. I'm getting double whammy.
The bad thing with page is you have to transfer everything over to that.
They do all that.
Oh, nice. Nice, nice.
I left a meeting, well, it would have been on the fifteenth meeting, I guess. Whatever, and, uh, walked in to find my staff all huddled down.
I hate it when they put stuff on.
Having meltdown because my land record server had crashed out. Would not even, we couldn't get.
If it didn't say District One, I wouldn't think.
So I had a hard drive, we, it, it holds like ten hard drives. I got one around and it's designed when one starts to go, to go over.
Well, are we talking about employees or officers?
So they ran up here from Duncan and, um, got that shifted out and got it back up and running. But this is like the third one I've lost in about eighteen minutes and I'm just not real comfortable at this point and, and I would rather be proactive.
Right, right.
But I wanted to wait till we got past fiscal year and.
Reactive is a lot of work.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll be replacing that one. And then the copying machine on the land record side, we just flat wear them out. The server's guy's been up here about five times in the last two and a half weeks, it's like, okay, I'm done.
That Kelco, I, I just saw the mouse pad, they're from Duncan, pretty big company.
You know, they're, they, they've really, really grown. They are a local homegrown induction. I think they're at about seventy-five, eighty employees. They're, they're kind of an interesting story. Tim Keller is the CEO, well, Tim's dad, Mike, actually once upon a time worked in a county clerk's office and realized what software could do.
Yeah.
To modernize the process of land records as well as the financial and set his voice to designing software. And that's how they got the start.
Just that one, he got enough kids to staff it.
Yeah, they're very prolific.
Well, he sends a Christmas card every year with a photo on there, I mean, he's got.
Talent.
Couple football teams.
But it was nice because it was, it was, designing layout was with someone so familiar, having worked in the office and could, you know, it's very proprietary and, uh.
Alright.
I think they have sixty-five counties are using sixty-five county clerks.
I, I got your back.
Are they pretty, uh, easy to get ahold of?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Well, I could date with my server. I mean, the girls had already called them, of course, I, I didn't know anything about it, and they'd been on the phone trying to, to, you know, to do a lot, yeah. And, uh, when it realized that we were, I got there. I'm not very, I, and they know, oh, well, wait till she gets, she'll do it. And I'm on the phone with them going, look, I can't even get a keyboard tour and, you know, in two and a half hours, I had it on.
So I have all this budget thing.
They were here till, I guess we walked out about six something that night.
Once we figure out how much we can expect, how much gets budgeted and all that.
Yeah.
The highway fund goes through as requested. I just wanted to look at maybe getting some equipment to do chip seal with. I'd be more than interested in any other district that would like to go in and put that together, put that together. I think we could do a lot of good on our county roads with that kind of equipment. I'm going to try and pursue that this year with those funds, if they're there.
Chip seal is a lot of good.
Just to plan.
Sure, have a, have a base in order to be able to get a chip seal. But, uh, Oklahoma County District One has a chair and crew that does that kind of stuff. We might want to do it, agree with them if they can do it.
That's one there could figure out, if we're going to have the CEDs, hecking they don't buy like a piece of equipment like that. And the counties.
So who, so then, then who gets, decides who gets to use it?
It'd have to be a board action.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's like when, uh, when we buy a piece of equipment, be shared amongst three road districts. You know, it's not always an issue of who gets to use it, but oftentimes somebody's, you know, using it now and somebody else needs it and it's, you throw, uh, what, seven counties into that mess and, uh.
I'd rather see them take that money and do that though as, spend it on a CED manager.
I'd rather see them take that money and, uh, give it back to us.
I've been arguing that for a long time and everyone.
I think they're all on board with that.
I don't think they're all on board with that.
Try to be reasonable.
But close.
Pretty much, problem is.
Everybody except the person that might lose.
Oklahoma County doesn't get their chair if you would, it supplements everybody else. So if you bust it up and do it that way, well, yeah.
We're going to get like six thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's sixty-nine hundred dollars.
The amount of money that came down by statute.
Well, I can tell you, Logan County was the only one talking about cutting the budget on salaries and.
Everybody else looked like, acted like a tree full of owls.
Yeah.
Now, are you, is that money restricted in any way?
Restricted.
When you get that seat, I mean, typically, the twenty thousand each year you all will apply to a, a project of some sort or something, so I don't know, is it, is, because six thousand dollars isn't even going to buy you a load of rock.
Yeah, it's, it's the same, it's the same thing as, uh.
So you can use it for anything?
That's road, that's transportation related, yes.
But I mean, you could buy rock.
You can't buy an ice cream machine.
Right, right, but I mean, you can buy, I'm thinking of the individual material, like just a load of rock.
We could do that for a particular road as a project.
Well, I'm just thinking at six thousand dollars, I mean, you're not going to get.
Yeah, you send them a, a shot of a pothole on a road, yeah, you could do that. But you got to have pictures of potholes.
Right, so it is to a specific project.
Yes, it is.
So Monty would have to drive down.
Now, I had twenty thousand last year that I applied for was for Waterly Road and was one of the funds that I used for Waterly.
They'll buy a truck or pick it up or something.
Buy, pick it up or.
We used ours to buy a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking with six thousand dollars, I mean, you're just not going to get any.
I mean, I think that's what we brought the road with this year.
Might get a media part of that used.
Might do this time.
For six thousand, you can't get them?
Might do this.
Everybody can have like five millions of dollars every time they come through there.
Thank you, versus fraud.
Put that on him, I'm bothered, you know, we helped.
Still working his way through.
Monty could turn and run backwards, I wouldn't have that.
No, it's just down there, right along.
You guys conduct this like something, work real quick.
Don't talk to them, tell them.
I thought he should pipe himself.
He does most of the time. What's sad is he answers himself, so.
I think some of the best conversations I ever have are with myself.
Then he argues.
I didn't say that.
Can you carry now?
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of times he just can't hear someone else talking. That's why I mentioned sliding him over. You can hear better.
About just turning up the earnet. Oh, Don, right, my roads are attentive, he wears hearing aids and I have to be really, really attentive to that because oftentimes he'll look at me like he didn't, because he didn't hear what I was, what I said, so.
Well, I got an employee that, I'm like, you really got to speak it. You're not saying nine out of ten times.
Huh? But Don's pretty good about not saying how, he's really good at giving you dumb looks.
You don't hear it, you don't hear it.
Well, the misunderstandings that, I mean, people that can't hear very well, I mean, it's very difficult for them to really understand content in a, in a conversation.
Especially if it's about eye-to-eye contact.
Yeah.
I'll mess the field, I'll be talking to you on this early. Well, you're right, I wonder if it was a tough. Well, you're right, there was a couple of them.
Is that yellow in sample?
That will finish the conversation.
Cash.
They go to renew your five-year plan, Mike, I try to stop them, but...
Well, you know how it goes when you're out of the room, there you go, that's what happens.
As they used to say in the military, "Out of the room, out of the deal."
That's it.
Out of the room, out of the what?
Deal.
Deal.
So that's how you get assigned to be a point man, is what I'm saying.
Gotcha.
The guy that's not in the room, always get, you're a point, yeah.
Was it raining out there, Mike? You got a dollar around us.
Well, I'm down to only about a hundred, you know, you gotta have a call live radar.
I'll tell you, you have to put an extra ammo on some of them.
I still got a little lean flag.
You come back to what I'm saying.
You the initial for me, so I can get through this? I appreciate the thought. Well, I'm not even gonna comment on that.
You're getting a price of zero and a total of a thousand. You didn't do that, I know.
Boy, it is, it's splitting. Marshall might be getting a little bit up here.
I like that real tone. My regards is gone. Anything that, that allows you to do a scanner on your fire EMS. I've got two of them, one where I use sometimes that's different, and if there's a wild fire down through, well, you can hear all the...
Damn it.
All the particles and everybody.
Oh, was it, that was yours? We can reconsider, if you want. They still selling bullets over at Crescent Cove?
Yep.
Good for them.
Yep. They have them on, I mean...
Well, at least they don't have to go knock on Willie's door to find bullets anymore, you know, and see if he's home. I'm down to under a hundred for...
Well, he had coming around the night to the morning.
Was your Andy citizens desire to be heard?
Yeah, well, I'd go with that.
Any citizens, uh, desire to be heard?
Marty, you better do that.
Consideration possible, actually, on the jury?
Hang on, hang on.
We don't have the commissioners up here.
Well, and I didn't realize that was just now.
It's not on there.
And I know why it isn't, and I apologize on you.
You better get under any citizens desire to be heard.
All right, well, if I'm a citizen at that point, then I've got a few things that I'd need to cover from a meeting I went to yesterday, that...
Pretty good meeting.
It wasn't too bad. Let me get through about four more of these before I pull time.
I apologize, I went back to last year's July one agenda, because there's so much of that evil stuff and, and grabbed, and at that time, that wasn't an item last year, so I'm sorry.
So next year, it will be.
I'll, I'll, I'll go, yeah.
Okay, citizens desire to be heard. I attended the meeting of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments yesterday, during thirty. Uh, some of the highlights that is, there's a possibl, oh, oh, not possible, hang on, the possibility comes later. Um, the Oklahoma Tax Commission began collecting and will start distributing fees for the 911 untries. Uh, today, those go directly to the, to ACOG, uh, and now the Oklahoma Tax Commission will start collecting those statewide and redistributing them. Of course, they take their cat, right, and then they'll send them down to, to the COGS. There's, how that is going to work out, hasn't, all those processes haven't been worked through, or at least Mr. Johnson up there hasn't, hasn't been told the exact details of how that's gonna work yet, so they're still working through that. Um, on the 911 side, this one's kind of, kind of interesting. Kingfisher County, there's some folks in Kingfisher County over at their PSAP that desires, and they're, they've been requesting for the last three, probably three and a half years, you'd have to check with Mark to find out how long before I got elected that this has been going on, but they are trying to get us to direct all 911 calls from cash and residents in Logan County to be routed to the Kingfisher PSAP instead of the Guthrie PSAP. This makes absolutely no sense to me at all. Uh, they, they quote that there's problems, time delays between Guthrie PSAP, the 911 PSAP, calling out their EMS folks. So I went back and looked at the, the EMS calls, and there aren't any in the timeframe that they're talking about. So the Guthrie PSAP did not process any EMS calls from that area over there. All of the calls that the PSAP gets over there, and, and I would say this is probably true across all 911 calls, probably eighty percent of all the calls you get 911 are, are sheriff or police-related, right? So they're, they're that, that type of a call, or fire, right, fire, rescue. Very few of them are actually EMS calls over there. So what they're wanting us to do is to transfer those over there, and, and it makes no sense. And the folks at ACOG also agree that it's, it just doesn't make sense to, for us to do that. One of the issues that, that they have over in cash and is, of course, it's split on the county line, the folks in cash and over on Kingfisher are also dispatched by the Guthrie PSAP, because it's all one group over there. So the ACOG has gone in and put all the, um, street, I mean, they've addressed the streets and all that stuff, and the directions on how the 911, the PSAP, how the dispatchers get to where they're supposed to get. But these folks in Kingfisher, there's, there's a couple of them that, that are really hot to get this done, and they've asked me to sponsor the transfer, and I, I just can't, this is one of those issues, I don't think there's anything broke, so I don't think we need to fix it, and that's just my opinion on it.
Is it money?
I agree with it. It, it is, because they, they would also get reimbursed for the, for the PSAP 911 calls as well. And there's also, yeah, there's also these 911 fees that are starting to increase and come in, so I think there might be a money issue there as well. Uh, one of the other issues that came out of that meeting is the possibility, and we don't know any of the details yet, but rural fire departments may come over, under the oversight of ACOG. We don't know what that means yet, or what effect that might have on rural fire departments' tax money and that sort of stuff.
So, that's legislative?
Uh, yes. I said yes, I'm gonna have to dig into that a little deeper. Uh, Mr. Johnson, John Johnson, just briefly went through that, that's something that's being kicked around, and so I'll, I'll try and keep the board up to date on that. State question, 779. Our board, uh, at the, the ACOG board voted to adopt a resolution of non-support for state question 779, and it's not because we have anything against education. Has to with the ability of municipalities to establish a tax base. If the state of Oklahoma establishes a one-set sales tax across the state, that in fact, in effect, cuts the legs off all municipalities, because that's the only way they've got to raise, uh, raise revenue for the services, is sales tax. Cities in county, cities don't get ad lorm tax or, or any other taxes that, that we collect here in the county or at the state level, they're restricted to sales tax only. So if the state takes a big bite of that off the top, it, it really restricts the, the base level that a community can implement and, and get the, the voters to, to go along with voting in. So we, we voted to adopt a resolution of non-support of that, and I just kinda wanted to brief the board on that as well. There's also a state question 777 that'll be coming up in August, same sort of deal, uh, is looking for either a resolution of support, non-support. 777 is the Right to Farm Act, and there's a lot of controversy over that. Moving on, this year, our county dues decreased 4.7% to eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then on to the bridge that I promised that I'd update on. Uh, the State Highway 33 Bridge over Cottonwood Creek, the contract is to be lit this August, they've got to prepare it, so they're gonna, ODOT will let the con, contract out for construction in August, they're gonna expand up to four lanes up to Division. I'm kinda trying to figure out where they're gonna get that other half a lane, because they're not gonna move stables, you know, that's not, I think they might have to go over to the other side if they're gonna actually have four lanes up to that stoplight. Once they get, I can't figure out how they're gonna get past the funeral home, yeah, yeah, exactly, the funeral home puts them into a, a spot. But anyway, that contract's gonna be lit in August, expand to four lanes. Construction is supposed to start somewhere around January 2017, and the, the contract allows thirteen months to complete, so a year and a month, that's all I have, thank you. Now I'm gonna go back to the other commissioner.
If, if I may, on that 779, that would, of course, increase our sales tax in Guthrie from nine cents to ten cents. And in Crescent there, I found out it increased it to nine and a quarter, right now you're at eight and a quarter, I believe, there, Monty, there in Crescent, which is pretty cool from the standpoint of that's less than what it is in Edmond and Oklahoma City.
As a business owner, I find that to be an advantage, to be in Crescent.
You are correct, and aren't they doing a who loves their...
They are, well, they, that's the river. They bought a store and they're gonna...
Make it in one of those neighborhoods.
And it's gonna be a who loves.
Mariana loves you.
Okay, that's the story I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be some good income for them, and their city sales tax, I think, is three cents, yeah, three cents.
Does that work on Q next week?
On Q is supposed to start the week of the fifth, yes, right after, if you like, what they fully intend to do that, and for those who are looking at that, nice little entryway for those courses, the owner is getting that.
All right, uh, item thirty-five.
Do I hear a motion?
I do so, motion.
That's why you have more minutes.
Okay.
Most ways.
That's not...
That make it, it's after noon.
Oh, second or...
Well, get out of here then.
Call a favor?
All right.